Let me think if I, the way that I can embarrass you guys and make you even more nervous. I might move it by the way. Well, is Tom? I did not see, I think he's still talking. Would you ask him to please come in here, Mike? Okay. At this point in time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Julia, if you would please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Jared, if you would, please, a roll call.
Barb Barker? Tammy Blank?
Here.
Cindy Broad?
Here.
Julia Tamaki Kukuro? Tom Harley?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
Present.
Mrs. Leeper?
Present.
Mrs. Lowry?
Present.
Mr. Schroth?
Here.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome everybody tonight to our school board meeting. We have a couple of guests here this evening from the junior high. Mike, would you like to introduce the teacher for us, please?
I'm sure he could explain. Sure. So, so, thank you, everybody, for allowing us to jump in at the start of the meeting. I'd like to introduce our two teachers, and then perhaps the students can introduce themselves. Good practice for you. Mr. Harrington, Scott Harrington, and Mr. Michael Dolges are our two tech ed teachers at the junior high. And, uh, do you have a, sorry, should I start over?
Can you tell that we rehearsed this over and over? So, Mr. Scott Harrington and Mr. Michael Dolges are two tech ed teachers at the junior high. Very proud of the program that they're building, the support that we've had from the board and from central administration to build up our STEM programming at the junior high school. Our students are here to really highlight just a sample of the work they do. So, let's just, let's just pass the microphone to you two. You three like to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Josh Romford.
I'm Kip Roth.
I'm Kat McLaren. We're all in eighth grade. We're here representing the first and second place teams for the STEM. Um, we wanted to just show our gratitude for all of your support.
And to show our token of appreciation, we've laser engraved these leather portfolios for you guys that we will hand out. And, uh, yeah.
These, these three individuals were missing two. Uh, there's two from the ladies team that couldn't make it this evening. Uh, the ladies team took first place in the regional STEM competition, which included schools from IU twenty-eight and IU three. And, uh, the two gentlemen there, they play second place at the regional STEM competition. And our first place ladies team now has the opportunity to move on to the state STEM competition, uh, which will be coming up in, in a couple of weeks. Uh, these folks are shining examples of what Indiana is all about, and, and they certainly, uh, deserve the awards that they got. And as a show, again, of their appreciation, they thought it would be nice if we, uh, used their skills and, and ma- made just a small token of appreciation for all of the support and, um, you know, everything that, that, uh, you've been helpful with in building up our tech ed program.
Before you make the presentation, knowing that these folks have received a couple of honors and going on possibly to states, I think a round of applause is certainly, uh, appropriate.
So, without further ado, uh, these young folks will, uh, pass out the, uh, leatherette portfolios that they you, uh, designed and made using our laser engraving equipment that we have in our tech ed lab. Thank you.
And engraved. No, I mean, with, with, with your name. Only Terry would think of that. For, for the other board members, uh, they do have ones for you as well. Uh, you should see Mike as far as making arrangements, uh, to get your copy. Um, and, but I'll let that up to the individual board member.
Good luck in the next level.
Yeah, yeah.
The rest of the board, these things look great.
Okay, well, that was that was great, uh, to, and my thanks to the folks at the junior high for their, their hard work. Um, there is no board president message tonight. Uh, Jared, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
No public comment? Um, IAEA, Ask Me, SGA, or Stuca. I saw Paul a little earlier. Oh, there he is.
Hi, Mr. Schroth, how are you?
Very good, sir.
Good. I would like to request, uh, to delay my, um, remarks until, uh, section eight point four in the agenda. If that's not acceptable, I can certainly close in nine point two under public comment with, uh, your permission, please.
No, eight point four would be acceptable.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, nothing heard on the other three. Uh, Mike, are you gonna let, uh, Rob give you your report today? Are you gonna muddle through?
I think we'll save everyone and no report tonight, sir.
Okay, he'll catch up, um, and anybody didn't hear that, he'll catch up with us next time. Okay, uh, no solicitors report tonight. Okay, section three, approval of the minutes and the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and all those, uh, let's see, I think Cindy wanted us to vote in the negative again because we have a couple people that, that aren't with us tonight. So, if you, uh, have an objection to the minutes or the agenda, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard, chair assumes that they passed unanimously. I guess we're working on a different agenda here. Okay. Mr. President. We're down to four. Um, Indiana County Technology Center, Uta, it's your turn.
Um, I do not have a report. We meet tomorrow.
Okay. Um, Barb is not here for IU twenty-eight. Tom, it looks like you're next up.
We don't have a committee report. Um, so move into the, move into the motions.
Very good.
Five-two, um, agreement with Adelphi Educational Services that the agreement with Adelphi Village to provide a general alternative education program, which includes behavioral support program, educational, uh, success program, and day treatment program for twenty-one, twenty-two school year be approved as presented. Second. Thank you, Uta.
Okay, any questions, comments, or, um, discussion on five point two? Nothing heard?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, cameras, go ahead, please.
So, I read the lengthy documents, um, that go, go along with this agreement. And I just have a question. I don't know if this is a place to discuss it or not, but I walk by that school every day, and the property is a disgrace. And it, there's trash constantly out in front of it that is right across the school from the junior high. They don't keep the, the lawn area, and I really, I understand that they have a lot of costs, but they have a lot of very nice facilities as well. I have a problem sending our kids to a facility that looks so unappealing. Um, I, I think that says, I, I think it sends a bad message. So, I don't know if there's anything we can do to address that. Um, they just need to clean up the outside of the place. I have no idea what it looks like inside. Um, and maybe we should tour that as well.
Okay, Tammy, go ahead.
I just have to agree with Tamara. Um, if the outside is run down and there's, it's not being taken care of, I just shudder to think what the inside is, is like and the care they're giving students.
Mr. President, what I could do is I can write a letter, express our displeasure with the current conditions of the way it looks outside, if you'd like. If you'd like me to do that on the board's behalf.
Um, did everybody hear what, um, Mike said? Okay. So, I think that would be at least a way to address the issue initially, and then we'll see what their response is and go from there.
Can we see about maybe getting a tour of the inside, too? Because I totally agree. I, I always, I'm always concerned that we send kids there as an alternative education program, which means that they're usually in some kind of trouble in, in the first place. So, you send them to a facility, and if the facility is shoddy and not kept well, they're, they're already, they're already having self-esteem issues. They're already ready, knowing that they're separated from the main school. So, you send them to a place that's below standard, that's gotta have an impact on them, and it would not be a good one. So, if we could see about getting a tour of the inside, or just not everybody, but somebody, check out the inside and see if it's good.
Cindy, my suggestion would be let the administration, uh, deal with that. I certainly agree that a tour in the inside might be, uh, might be useful. But why don't we let them take care of that and, uh, get that figured out?
Absolutely. I just wanted it to be more than just addressing the issue of the outside. I think we need to gently address the issue of the inside also.
I, I could do that, Miss, Miss Cindy, Mr. President.
Okay, so we'll, we'll let the administration handle that and, um, uh, take it from there. Okay, any other discussion, questions, or comments?
Yes.
Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
Adelphi, I believe, is a tenant of that building. Um, so there's a landlord involved, um, and there's also board or ordinances. Um, I just, I mentioned that as, um, some of the problems may be beyond Adelphi's ability to solve.
Understood, but, uh, that would certainly be the, I think the right starting point would be the letter. And then, and then let it, then see where it goes. Okay. All right, we'll vote for this in the negative. Um, anybody object? Please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard, chair assumes that it passed unanimously. Next, next one, Tom.
That the list of seniors submitted by Mr. Wade McElany, principal for graduation of June, on June fourth, twenty twenty-one, provided their work for the balance of the school year is satisfactory, be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Um, Wade, are you still on the call here? Um, would, uh, Rob or Mike, uh, have anything from the administration, uh, to add to this?
Policy that we're required to bring the names of graduation forward, so we're just complying with their policies, sir.
Okay. Further discussion, questions, or comments? Nothing heard. Again, we'll vote in the negative. If you, um, oppose to this, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard, chair assumes that it passed unanimously. Five point four, Tom.
Based on the recommendation of the committee, the board waives all costs to students who enroll in the twenty-twenty-one summer school credit recovery and waive all fees for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch who enroll in the credit advancement for the summer for the twenty-twenty-one summer school. Individual appeals for waiving credit advancement may be I don't like that one, hold on. Additionally, individual appeals for waiving of credit advancement may be made directly to the administration and will be, and will be made on, and decision will be made on a case-by-case basis, period.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Um, my suggestion would be after credit advancement and before the word "may", you include the word "fees". That's a friendly amendment. Is that okay?
Um, I deleted the base of income because, um, um, that gives the administration the broadest brush to make these decisions. There may be other reasons that
Okay, it's been moved in second. Do we have, Tammy, you've got your hand up. Please go ahead.
Um, I have to recuse myself from the vote since I have children that will probably be attending summer school this summer. So, uh, just wanted to recuse myself.
Taking that German four, huh?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Julia.
I just want to say, uh, Tom, that I think this is a, a really important, um, motion tonight, and I'm supporting it. I think we are in, um, as a board. It's really, I hope that, um, the parents and students understand that this is a tremendous opportunity that we're offering this summer and a terrific program that I think will be meaningful on many different levels and now, um, certainly more affordable across the board. So, I can't say enough about how hard the administration, I think, has worked on this, and I really encourage people to, to, uh, to seriously consider this, um, this summer.
It'd probably be good if the administration put some type of a, a reminder on the Outlook calendar that this is just for this year, and we'll need to review this again next year about this time, right?
Put all funds for the next three years. This would be a good use for those funds. And, uh, Lord knows, we, our kids need all the help they can get this summer.
Uta, your mic is hot. Did you want to add anything?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Nothing heard. Jared, let's do this one by roll call. Tammy?
Um, I'm, I'm recusing myself.
You're, you're abstaining, then?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Cindy Broad?
Yes.
Julia Tamaki Kukuro? Tom Harley? Mr. Kerr? Mrs. Leeper?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Schroth?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for that. Um, looks like Policy and Personnel Committee, Uta, your turn. Think you're on mute yet, um, Uta.
I can't, um, we do have, I don't have a committee report. We do have a meeting on May tenth at five thirty. Um, so we will just go right into the agenda items. Um, six point two custodian substitute list that the board approves the custodian substitute list as submitted.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on that? Mike, anything you wanted to add, um, on substitutes? Okay, um, no other questions or comments. We'll vote on this in the negative. All those opposed, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard, chair assumes that it passed unanimously. Go ahead, Uta.
Okay, um, six point three elementary summer learning camp instructors that based on the recommendation of the committee, Sarah Bond, Emily Doran, Lisa Freidhoff, Zoe Gailey, Tara Maruka, Robin Nieswanger, Angela Petroff, Angela McMasters, April Morielli, Shelley Wright, and Katie Wooddrove be employed as summer learning camp instructors if needed at their per diem rate.
Second.
We're not gonna take the second part of this?
And then two, that based on the recommendation of the committee, Natalie Deck, Angela Frontino, Maria Kokolos, Heather Miller, Carly Manier, and Chandler Toman be employed as summer learning camp instructors if needed at thirty dollars per hour.
Second.
It moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussions?
I just want to apologize if I butchered anybody's name. I really am sorry.
You did a great job.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to, uh, thank the administration and all these teachers for stepping up, um, and volunteering for, um, more work over summer. Um, our kids really need the help, and so I, I, I thank each and every one of them, regardless of how badly you butchered the names.
Okay, anything you'd like to add, Rob? Okay. Thanks.
No, sir, just to, other than to echo everyone's thanks, I mean, this is a, this is an incredible opportunity for students and, uh, a really necessary step that the board's taking here to try to, you know, give our students every chance to succeed here. And it's been a very, very challenging year. So, thank you to everyone from the board, all the way down to the the teachers and the, uh, and those who are gonna help volunteer at this camp. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Okay, Cindy, go ahead.
Um, I'm just want to know about both of the motions and the wording "if needed". Um, I, I know we have a lot of students signed up for this summer stuff, and I'm wondering if there's a possibility that we're going to need additional teachers, not the way this is worded, it sounds like we might not need everybody that is listed here. Is there a possibility that we're going to need more?
That's a great question, Miss Cindy. As of right now, we're looking at a ratio of about ten students to, uh, every teacher for the first session and about thirteen to one for the second session. We think we have put in the big enough buffer in that we can accommodate, but if it does get worse, we'd come back to the board and request more. Right now, we're good to go, but we're still waiting for one school to get their information updated. So, it could change, but right now, we feel comfortable where we are, Miss Cindy, but that's a good question.
Yes, ma'am, and just to piggyback on that, last year when we did the, uh, catch-up camp, we had two hundred students register and only about a hundred and twenty actually attended the camp daily. And we wanted to ensure the flexibility we needed in case we didn't have the turnout that, uh, that originally signed up. So, uh, you know, we weren't, you know, stuck in a situation paying for, for people we didn't need.
We hired a little bit more, you'll see, but the smaller class size ratios, because we don't know what type of issues we may have in summer, COVID, or people being sick. So, we gave ourselves a buffer as well.
Okay, um, is that, is that all, Cindy?
Yep, that's good.
Okay, Tamara, go ahead.
I'm just curious, um, about the per diem rate versus the hourly rate, or the thirty dollar an hour rate. What's the difference between?
That's a great question. We're, we're required, but we're required by contract to pay them their per diem rate for summer school. After, uh, we don't have enough employees internally that apply, we're able to go outside. So, motion six point three is reflective of our staff. In particular, one is our full-time staff who agreed to work in the summer camp. Item number two under six point three are those long-term subs who were hired, and then item six point four are all those people who are not employees of the district who agreed to work and be instructors and tutors during the camp. So, we're required by contract to pay it per diem. Everyone else after that, we've got the flat rate of thirty dollars per hour.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any further questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, um, we'll vote for this in the negative. If you're opposed to it, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard, chair assumes that it passed unanimously. Next item.
All right, six point four elementary summer learning camp tutors that based on the recommendation of the committee, Helena Dadson, Chloe Fleming, Elizabeth Gugan, Megan Harple, Nicola Anarali, Brooke Keith, Elizabeth King, Jennifer Klein, Elizabeth LaCarte, Civil Moore, Jody Orr, Casey Rabel, Emily Reissinger, Lindsay Strong, Miranda Yurig, Amelia Winal, and Lindsay Uptograph be employed as summer learning camp tutors if needed at thirty dollars per hour.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Uh, Tamara, your hand's still up. Is it, uh, further question? Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else? Questions, comments, or discussion? Uh, okay, we'll get and vote in the negative. All those opposed, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard, chair assumes that the motion passed unanimously. Next item.
Six point five physician services agreement that the agreement between Indiana Area School District and the Center for Orthopedic and Sports Medicine for physician services during the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Uh, questions, comments, or discussion from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Cindy.
In the agreement, it says something to the effect that Cosm agrees to, um, treat students who are referred to them by the district. And, so, does that mean, because I think basically the entire agreement looked like it was written for football with the presence of the, the Cosm people at the games and so forth. But does that mean that if somebody gets hurt on the soccer team, and we say they should go to Cosm, that Cosm will see those students for the same fee, the same rate? What, what did that, that terminology, that they would see students referred by the district? What did that mean?
Ms. Broad, I, I can get you information on that. I'm not one hundred percent sure what the policy is at the high school to refer students there, who they would refer and from what sports, whether it even be a sports student or not. Um, but I can follow up with you on that.
Okay, so they do, I mean, is, has it been in the past that they, they will see students from all of our sports? If somebody's injured, that we can send them to Cosm? Or is it football only?
Maybe Mr. McElany knows. If not, I, we can, I would need to follow up, um, with the athletic director, with Mr. Lozanik on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cronauer. At this time, I have no reason to believe that other athletes are not referred, but also we will double-check on that.
So, Cindy, my understanding is that at home football games, there is actually a physician from Cosm present at the game, and that during other sporting events, if it works out for the schedule between Cosm and the school district, then they could provide coverage at those specific games as well. But they're definitely on site, on the field, um, well, on the sidelines, um, during the football game.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further questions, comments, or discussion? Nothing heard. Uh, we'll vote for this in the negative. Anybody opposed to this? Please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard, chair assumes that it passed unanimous. Next item.
Six point six employment of a housekeeper that based on the recommendation of administration, Elizabeth Feder be employed as a housekeeper effective April twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one, and at an hourly rate of eleven dollars. Said employment to be subject to satisfactory completion of a ninety-day probationary period. And six seven employment of a custodian that based on the recommendation of administration, Greg Fink be employed as a custodian effective May third, twenty-twenty-one, and at an hourly rate of twelve dollars. Said employment to be subject to satisfactory completion of a ninety-day probationary period.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments? Questions, comments, or discussion? Jared, is there anything you need to add to that?
The only thing I would add, sir, that this should bring us to full staff for custodians at this point. For the going into summer, that's a good thing with all the cleaning that needs to take place. So we're happy to have these two people on board.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion from the board? Nothing heard. We'll again vote in the negative. If you're opposed to this motion, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that it pass those motions pass unanimously. Thanks, Uta. Terry, it looks like it's your turn.
I believe we did the committee meeting report. Julia, did we do the? Yeah, okay. I'll go on to seven point two artificial turf motion that the board approves, not improves. That the board approves the replacement of the artificial turf at the high school stadium at an estimated cost of three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any thing from the administration on this?
Mr. President, we've been pretty open about this, had several conversations and not only audit finance building the grounds, but academic committee meeting. It's time, it's needed, and I thank you the board for their support.
Okay, are there questions, comments, or discussion from the board?
Yeah, I'll just say, Walter, that I agree that that, you know, hearing and seeing the pictures that the turf is in need of replacement. I want to thank the A D Greg Lozanik and many of the coaches that use the field. Their knowledge and and experience on using other fields in the in the region helped out with the decision. So I am in support of the motion.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, Tamara, looks like you your hand's up. And Cindy, go ahead, Tamara first, and then Cindy.
Yeah, I think this is much needed and it's we've talked about this a lot, and there's been a lot of involvement from many parties. So kudos to all the people who are working together. I did ask at a previous meeting if we could rename the field, if there was a time limit to the naming and or if we can name, you know, the field is named, the stadium is named. Is there any way that we can do any of that? To I mean, I don't think we should stop this. This should definitely go through, but just as a another option for revenue.
Okay, thanks, Tamara. Cindy?
I just want to say, I mean, people that know me know that I have been against replacing the turf for years. I was against getting it in the first place, then I was against replacing it. But I do have to say I know it's time to have it replaced, but I'm very, very grateful to the maintenance staff and the teams for taking such good care of it that it lasted as long as it did. It's it's always a tribute to the district when we have somebody come in to look at a a roof to be replaced or something in a building or the turf and the people coming in to look at it and say, wow, you took really good care of this. That's why it lasted so long. So thank you very much to everybody for making the tax dollars go as far as they did. And yes, we need to replace it now.
Okay, Cindy, thank you. Anybody else? Tamara, the only thing that I would I would say in response, that's a very good question. Is I understand it when the turf was initially installed, there was a time limit placed on the motion. At the time it was initially installed ten or twelve years ago, whenever that was. But I don't believe there was any kind of a formal document, at least we've not been able to locate one. So that's kind of the status at this point.
Do you mean a time limit on the naming? You said the motion. Do you mean on the naming rights?
Well, the the naming rights, I don't think were in a separate motion. I believe that the motion that approves the installation of the artificial turf initially included a clause in that motion setting up the naming of the stadium for twenty-five years.
Okay, so it's twenty-five years. Okay.
That's my understanding at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Uta, your turn.
I just want to mention that it definitely needs to be done because it is very worn. But this will also serve our student school population. So it's not just athletics. It's academics and extracurriculars that'll benefit from having the turf at the stadium. And it's a it's a good investment at this time.
And if Mr. Trump's still on, do we know when the original one was installed, what year that was?
Yes, that was the summer of two thousand and nine.
Thank you, Greg. And I forgot to mention you and and your collaboration and your work and the research that you've done and getting a what you what you all feel is a good product to install with as a new turf.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll take a roll call on this one. Jared, if you would, please.
Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Cindy Brode?
Yes.
Julia Tomarkey-Cucuro? Tom Harley? Mr. Kerr? Mrs. Leeper?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Schroth?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, Terry, maybe we could do seven, three and seven, four together?
Yeah, sure. Seven point three is fence relocation that the proposal from Penn fencing to relocate the fence on the one side of the artificial turf at an estimated cost not to exceed six thousand dollars be approved?
Second.
Stadium padding is seven point four that the board directs the administration to bring back to the board and twenty twenty-one meeting, two proposals for consideration. One to replace the padding at the stadium and another to repair the padding.
Terry, before you include covering the padding or covering the padding, so there's three options.
Tom, at the end there, instead of a period and be covering the padding as a third option.
Okay, moved in second. Do we have any questions, comments, or further discussion on seven, three and seven, four as modified? Okay, nothing heard. We can vote for those in the negative. If you're opposed to either of these two motions, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that they pass unanimous unanimously.
I'd like to make a comment on seven, three.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
The moving of the fences in the where the soccer teams stand during the games right now, they're three feet off of the off the boundary line. Just remove that fence back a little bit and give them a little more space to be out of out of play. Thank you, Walter.
Okay, that's good to understand why we're moving it. Okay, but they both passed. Julia, you're up.
Julia, we can hear you on.
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Okay, what if I yell? Okay, good. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna have to hold my mask out because so we had a joint meeting of buildings and grounds with Mr. Kerr's committee and audit and finance, I think it was last week. And as we said before, we mainly focus a lot of the focus of the meeting was obviously the budget and then the ESCO project. We spent a lot of time talking about that. Tonight, audit and finance had another meeting in which we really dug into several events that happened recently. So one of the things that we started with that preoccupied us really was the report from Stefan from our contractor at Eisenhower School, who's going to be doing the work through the insurance company to correct all the damages. We had a report from him. And I think we all agree that we we had an opportunity to take a tour of the building last week, correct? Yeah, last Tuesday. And I think we were all taken aback at how serious the damage was to the west wing, which is the one that heads west out four twenty-two west towards Armstrong Township. And the south wing itself, which, you know, heads, you know, south, obviously towards McCree's, I guess. That that wing also sustained damages, but of course, not to the extent of the west wing. And we were very grateful that that no one was hurt because it was a serious fire. So Stefan gave us a brief list tonight. It's not brief at all, actually, I'm being facetious, but a list of where he thought we were going to go with damages and the engineers are engineers are evaluating this right now. They've removed the old modules that where the fire originated. Those are gone. And grass seed, I guess, is planted now. But he said that the the basic repairs to that south wing are going to be concrete framing exterior, concrete exterior and interior framing, plaster, ceiling tiles, drywall, finished carpentry, demolition, masonry, glass and glazing, flooring, roofing, HVAC, teledata. And we also discussed briefly the sewer lines. So the, you know, it's it's a pretty bad situation. Fortunately, we have a real good insurance policy, but it's going to be an uphill climb for us. Because, you know, it's been and the administration has been terrific about getting those students placed within three days. Mr. Vukas, have those Eisenhower students put in another building. So on top of everything else, the pandemic and all the planning, the administration, I really want to say did a yeoman's job. And I when I got the text that this had happened, I just thought of Mike and all of the administrators getting that call in the middle of the night. It must have, you know, just a very upsetting call probably, as I thought, took five years off their life. And thank goodness, no one was hurt. That's the main thing. So we got into a little bit of a discussion tonight about, you know, the south wing and what we might do to improve that. Because if you're going to do the west wing, you know, you can't have the south wing out of sync, and there was some damage sustained. So I think we all agree that we want to try to conserve our funds as much as possible so that we can we can do what we need to do on our end in addition to what the insurance company will do for us through their contractor, and we'll already have contractors in the building. So we're starting to get our our thoughts together, and we've kept our wits about us. So we'll be updated regularly from Stefan and from Mr. Cronauer and the Buildings and Grounds Committee. That that committee is going to do a lot of work on running all of these plans through Buildings and Grounds and Mr. Kerr's leadership. So it's a lot of work. We also dovetailed next in with the discussion of the ESCO. Now, we had had a proposal come in for ESCO. As I said, we discussed that at the joint meeting extensively. And the project that they put together for that bond funding was about three point one million dollars. So in other words, we would we would borrow that amount through the bond market in all likelihood, and you get a savings attached to that. It's a very unique and useful bond product that the market now offers. But although we are in a pretty good financial condition because of the measures this board has taken for the past four years and in making sure that we've been financially stable so we can have a great education. We also know that the repairs never stop and the needs never stop, and we have to use the money we have in reserve very carefully. When we started to tot up our numbers on doing the ESCO as well as what we're the opportunity that might exist at Eisenhower, we've decided to pull back for now on ESCO. And we did talk a little bit about, you know, what we're going to do about the roof over the membrane on the roof over East Pike. So that's going to be ongoing as well as some other repairs, including continuing to look at and do some testing at Horseman for the electrical system. So we have a lot on our plate, but the but the whole purpose of this committee is to make sure we don't overextend ourselves and or for that matter, over leverage ourselves or under extend ourselves either. So we want to hit the sweet spot. So that's where we are right now. Mr. Cronau, and I urge you to look at it prepared an excellent document that he entitled summary of funds available for capital improvements. So from the bond proceeds, Jared, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have total funds available of about five, almost a million, six million dollars. But if we take out what we still owe on the East Pike entranceway of about two fifty-three, two hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars. That comes off of the six million. We have a little wee bit left on outstanding invoices on the life skills program. So that's about eight thousand dollars. So our and then we look at our you add to that our capital reserve, which is separate from the bond fund. Those are kept in that money's kept in certificates of deposit. So the capital reserve is kept on deposit for us at the bank and as well, but in a different type of format. So when we look at, we have right now in the capital reserve, what about one point? Almost one point seven million. It's a nice position to be in, but money, you know, if a fool and her money soon parts, we have to be careful here. So we have so when we budget these items at three seventy-five for the turf, which we've elected and voted to do tonight, the stadium relocation of six thousand and the stadium padding at about twenty-seven thousand, we ducked out about about five, about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that brings us to oh, and then we could do a possible, maybe, maybe not possible budget transfer of six hundred thousand dollars at year end, which will put us at one point eight. Jared, you want to go through the fund, the future funds transfers approved on four twelve twenty-one. So you're you're adding back in four hundred thousand dollars, and that's that Esser teacher thing, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That is the money that the board approved at the last board meeting to transfer from the general fund over the next two years as kind of a reimbursement for the artificial turf. It will come from using the Esser funding to pay for roughly two full-time teachers over the next two years is where the funds will be freed up to make that transfer.
So that's a wash on our balance sheet essentially.
It is, yes, ma'am, because we'll be recognizing the federal revenue to pay for that.
Could you remind the board and the taxpayers what you're expecting to get in on the Ezers, the federal program, the code of COVID relief?
In total, with the three separate allocations, it is around five point six million dollars.
That's really amazing. That's really amazing. Now Jared has down here under estimated annual expenditures over the next two years. You have about a million dollars, but I think that's a low estimate. Would you agree?
Well, that is just coming out of capital reserve. That is just generally what we spend on normal items that the board approves as part of the capital reserve budget, and that includes carpeting, new desk, sometimes a new vehicle if we need it. So it really is just an estimate. It is not including any major building project of any any type. That is just our normal year-to-year money we would spend out of capital reserve.
So our projected balance moving forward is about you have it at six thirty of twenty-three, about one point seven million, but our total funds available right now are about seven point four six million, correct?
The seven point four six is the total between capital reserve and the bond funding we have remaining.
So that's, you know, it's nice to be it's nice to have options, and we certainly have them now. And what's what we're coming up with is, you know, what projects do we really want to do? So we put the ESCO on hold, and we're going to look at that and keep a careful watch on some of the important projects that were within that 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 list that we have that we look at all the time at committee. Now, next big thing we talked about tonight, which we will vote on tonight, is the ICTC budget. And they've done a tremendous job. They are kind of out of the weeds now, and they're back to a positive budget, which is a good good news. We will see our our enrollment number or excuse me, our tuition number go up about fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. They're currently educating evidently about ninety ninety-eight of our students. Yeah, I mean, it's just amazing. And they they kind of gauge our share by by a rolling average over three years. So it's really been tremendous.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, and we, you know, that that number is based both on our enrollment at the high schools overall, as well as our enrollment at ICTC.
Yeah, so it's exciting. So I mean, we're recommending approval, and I know Uta does a terrific job as our representative. So if you would like to say something now, Uta, about the budget at the ICTC, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm really pleased that over the past three years, we've increased our enrollment of students at the ICTC by thirty-seven students. And that, I think, speaks to the efforts on the part of the administration and the teachers and the career readiness class to make sure that students know about all the career options that are available to them. Not only the ones that involve going on for further formal education. And I think the staff at the ICTC have done a really good job at looking at the budget and making sure that it is in the best interest of the taxpayers and the students. And they really have worked hard to get to this point. It hasn't always been as as solid. And, you know, I want to really thank Rachel Herbowski for all of her work on this, so.
Yeah, they've done it. I mean, it's just, and Mike McDermott, I mean, the leadership out there has just been really good getting through their hurdles. So but we always knew they could do it, so. So we are recommending approval tonight. And then I'm going to leap ahead in our agenda. We did agree on the fees. What do you call that attribution? What do you call that when the credit? Recovery and advancement, yes, okay. So we did cover that, but I want to end tonight my report on the budget and Jared can help me with this. I think the things, and I want him to comment on his, his takeaways from the budget tonight. We vote on this, we vote on the preliminary budget on May 10. So any questions you have between now and then, you're going to have to talk to Jared. Because I don't, I'm not expecting another meeting, but Terry and Walter brought up two excellent points. Terry said, and we, and Jared pointed out to us that one big takeaway I have is that even though we're getting the 5.6 million roughly in the Ezers funding, the federal funding, you can't put that in the budget until you've, you've got an expenditure for it.
Yes, you don't recognize federal revenue until you have an expenditure to go along with it.
So the amount that this budget projects is is be is at 1.379 million, not, so that's what we know.
That's what we're planning on using in the next year's budget.
And the reason why I think we're in pretty good shape is because, as Walter, as Jared pointed out to Walter, our fund balance at the end of this year is stellar. We're, we're looking at having about an $8.6 million fund balance in the general fund. Next year, about a 6.9 million and 8% is where you want it to be. But so I think we're fine. But again, you know, the Ez, the full Ezers hasn't come in. So the other thing we've learned tonight, and then I'll turn it over to Jared, is that, you know, we're always looking at how we can compete better with our cyber, our, our cyber colleagues on the other side of the fence. Because it is a huge portion out of our budget. We're spending, you know, anywhere from a million to a million, three a year, paying for cyber students. It's a, it's a, it's a big item in our budget. But what we found out is that the law currently does not allow us to offer synchronous learning instruction beyond the pandemic. So Mike's going to send out a letter and we're, you know, any help we can get from the taxpayers in this district would be greatly appreciated because, you know, this is huge for us. And our synchronous learning program really did turn out to be quite a success. And I think in many, you know, obviously saved the district, I think, and the students. And then summer school for those who, who are going to need a little bit of brush up on certain subjects. So Jared, I'd like you to make any comments you have about the budget, please.
I think the budget's in a pretty good spot right now. I think, you know, having the Esser funding help us through this pandemic time is certainly giving us some relief. But certainly some of our local funding is is coming in better than we had projected, which is a good thing for the district, you know, real estate taxes came in better, EIT is coming in better than we had projected, and we hope next year will even come in stronger than this year. So we'll keep an eye on that, even over the next couple of months, to make any other changes or updates to the current budget, the way it is, they, as we gather more information. And I think conversations that we need to be having, you know, as a committee, as a board, is how we will replace the Esser funding in the future. Because right now it is filling a hole in our budget. Hopefully that will, could be made up possibly with other revenues, increases in revenues, but we do need to have those conversations going down the road so that it, the Esser funding doesn't become a cliff that all of a sudden goes away and we need to make up. And we will certainly, we have time to do that and we will can have those conversations. It's just something we need to start sooner than later. Because it does have a deadline, the Esser funding will go away in 2024.
So we have our plate full. But I think we're up to the task. And I feel pretty good about where we are right now, Mr. President. So that completes my report.
Thanks, Julia. You've got some motions here yet?
Yes, I do. So I'm going to, I'm going to move 8.2 submitted for the board's, for the board's information is the 2021-22 Indiana County Technology Center proposed budget in the total of 7,51,000 And this represents 1.86% increase over the 2021 budget. The exact amount to be paid by the district will be determined by enrollment. That the Board of the Indiana Area School District, a member of the Indiana County Technology Center, approved the excuse me, the proposed budget of the Operating Committee for the Fiscal Year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2022, in the amount of 7,51,000 $51,056.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Uta, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point as our rep on the ICTC?
No, I think I made my comments during the committee report. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or further discussion on the board? Okay, hearing nothing. Let's take a roll call vote on this. Jared, if you would, please.
Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Cinda Broad?
Yes.
Julie Tamarkey-Cucuro? Tom Harley? Mr. Kerr? Mrs. Lieber?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Schroth?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
So now we go to donations for the beautiful Ben Franklin Outdoor Learning Space. But the board approves the following donors for their monetary donations toward the Ben Franklin Outdoor Learning Space. Romeo, excuse me. Romeo's Pizza, McGreevy, McGreevy Crimson Wealth Management Group LLC, Brad and Jennifer Rowley, Stephen Bond, John and Rebecca Grozine, Grozenic, Timothy and Jessica Stossel, Daniel and Sarah McAdoo, Jill and John Tyson, and Angel, excuse me, Angel Long, Azad Ali and Solar Suliman. Excuse me if I miss pronouncing names. Samuel Clutter, Timothy and Brandy Pavlik, Environmental Pest Control, Environmental Pest Manager, Kelly McComey, Todd and Helen, Helen, Heather Redinger, James and Allison Bell, Emily and Frances Walker, Daniel and Christine Faglione, and Kenneth and Maria, Mariah, perhaps Drew.
Okay, moved in second. And this, just to clarify, is to accept some of the donations. You know, for the Ben Franklin Outdoor, outdoor park that their outdoor learning area that they're putting together. Do we have any further questions, comments, or discussion from the board? Yes, Tom?
I'd like to thank the, all the people that are making donations, helping out with this, encourage the public to to keep up the good, the good work and let's make this thing happen. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Anybody else? Okay, we'll vote for this in the negative. If you are opposed to 8.3, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard, the chair assumes that the motion passes unanimously. 8.4, Julia, go ahead.
Donations to Eisenhower Elementary School. That the board accepts. That the board accepts a donation of $750 from Blairsville Salzburg Education Association to Eisenhower Elementary Teachers for Classroom Supplies. Two, that the board accepts a donation of $3,000 from the Central West Region of the Pennsylvania State Education Association to Eisenhower Elementary Teachers for Classroom Supplies. And three, that the board accepts a donation of office and school supplies from the Indiana County United Way to Eisenhower Elementary.
Okay, it's moved in second for these donations. Paul, I think you said you'd like to make a couple of comments. Paul McHugh, if you would, go ahead, please.
Mr. Schroth, thank you very much. To say the statement that this has been a very difficult year, I think that's kind of becoming cliche. People all over the world will have lasting trauma of varying degrees for who knows how long. With everything going on in our world today, with all of the struggles facing our students and community, we now experience a fire at Eisenhower Elementary School. Any one of these events could have been crushing to a school community. What I've seen over the last week has made me pause and reflect how lucky we truly are. What I have seen is students, educators, and community come together for the greater good. I've seen nine and 10 year old students, along with their teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, transferred to new buildings in three days. Not three months during a summer break, but three school days. I've seen students, teachers, administrators, and community come together in ways that truly warm my heart. This may not have been the case in a different community or a different school district. This is why I'm so fortunate and so proud to be part of the Indiana Area School District community. The support is also reached beyond our school community. There are a couple of very special education groups that I would like to thank tonight. The Blairsville Education, the Blairsville Salzburg Education Association has donated $750 to the fourth grade, fifth grade, and specialist teachers at Eisenhower Elementary for classroom supplies. Thank you to Ms. Diane Antonasi, who coordinated the effort within the Blairsville Salzburg Education Association. I would also like to thank the Central West Region of PSEA for the donation of $3,000 to Eisenhower Elementary Teachers for Classroom Supplies. Central West Region of PSEA has members from Armstrong, Bedford, Cambria, Indiana, Jefferson, and Somerset Counties. I would like to add a special thank you to Ms. Kathy Muir for organization and the donations from the Central West. Mr. Schroth, Mr. Vukovich, IASD Board, thank you for allowing me time to speak tonight. Thank you.
You're quite welcome, Paul, and we also want to express our gratitude to all three of these groups for their generosity and helping our teachers in this time of need. Questions, comments, or further discussion?
Note in the chat room, it looks like that $750 maybe should be $600. Can you open that chat? It was from Diane Antonasi.
Diane says it's $600.
Yeah, so we may do a friendly amendment to that motion.
Sorry, Diane. It's still generous.
It reads, Blairsville Salzburg Education Association donated $600, not 750. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Yeah, take a friendly amendment to the 600 then. Okay, further questions, comments, or discussion on the board? Okay, we'll vote for this in the negative. Anybody opposed to accepting these donations? Please say no or nay at this time. Chair assumes that it passed unanimously. Okay, we're now down to closing. We have a discussion item, format for upcoming committee and board meetings. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to hear some feedback from the board. How you want to continue meeting? As you can tell, we're doing hybrid meetings. What do you want, if you could start thinking about, well, you wanted to continue this model? Or just do it for the nights? We have board meetings in the nights we don't do that virtual, as summer's coming up, we could do something different. I just wanted to put it out there and have the board think about how they want to do as far as, you know, besides pandemic, we've learned to work smarter with the remote technology and be able to have meetings conduct virtually. But I wanted to throw it to the board to think about that and see how they want to proceed. We don't have to make a decision tonight, sir. But I think it's important for the board to start thinking about that as we approach the summer months here.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Yeah, I, I totally agree, Mike. I think that as we continue to move on, we need to kind of try to figure out which way we want to do this, which meetings to do virtually, 100%, which meetings to do blended. And, and again, I don't think we're really trying to make a decision tonight. Just get some general feedback from the board and then set up a time later on when we can discuss it in, in more detail. I think Cinda had her hand up first. I could be wrong, but I see Cinda and Uta. Go ahead, please.
I want to just say again what we have all noticed over the time of the pandemic, when we've had the meetings online. The number of community people who are participating in these meetings is phenomenal. In the committee meetings, the number of board members who are at the committee meetings is phenomenal. I think as a board, Mike said, we're working smarter. I think we're working smarter. I think we're, we're being much more transparent. Everybody's being more informed because of the possibility of attending remotely. I have no problem with having some meetings in person. But I think as far as making sure that the public has a lot of access to the meetings, I think that we need to continue with the remote meetings at least in some way. And my question for tonight is, how many people from the public are at the junior high school attending the meeting today?
There were two.
Okay.
And then there was one other gentleman that was here. He just left a few minutes ago.
And how many people attended last week or the last meeting?
There's three, Chauncey, Josh.
There were about, I'd say, five people in attendance in person.
Okay, because the last meeting, we had a lot more people online than we have tonight. And, you know, online, we've got a lot of board members and so forth. And but the idea that we've got so many people attending all the meetings, committee and board meetings, I think it's important that we just accept this as part of the way things are going to be done in the future and that, that this could be a good outcome from the pandemic.
Okay, Cinda, go ahead, Uta.
I agree with Cinda. I think we've seen a lot of community turnout for both committee meetings and board meetings. And perhaps it is easier for folks to attend when they can do it virtually rather than in person. I know schedules get busy and sometimes that travel time just isn't there. So I think it would be a mistake to not continue having hybrid type meetings for both committee and board meetings.
Okay, thanks, Uta. Anybody else?
I, I agree with both Cinda and Uta on the necessity of keeping the, the people remotely. I like the blended meetings for the board meetings. I would like to point out that it is a tremendous burden on our technical staff to set this up every time. So that I would encourage the administration on the committee meetings to, to let us know if, if it'd be better for them to go all remote. I don't think we ever go back to, to only in person. So that's, that's where I'm sitting right now. The board meetings need to be blended like we're doing today. The committee meetings could be all remote if, if, if it's too much of a burden every Monday to set this up. So I'm a little concerned about the amount of time that it takes to make sure this works every time. So it's either going to be all remote or it's going to be blended. And I don't see us ever going back to only in person. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I guess two for the administration and for Randy. I mean, we, we could try going back to the boardroom, maybe. It'd be less costly for setup and that sort of thing if we did that. And if we keep it hybrid, there shouldn't be that many people attending in person that in the
Problem with that, sir, is the capacity limits the governor currently has in place. Board meetings are considered a gathering by law right now. And gatherings have to be limited to 25% of the capacity of the space.
The boardroom only it's only going to be six people.
There's probably 40, 30 or 40 chairs in that room.
But you have to consider six-foot distancing also because that is still in place.
That's true. Try to get through on the side.
Mr. President, let the board think about it. You think about it as well. We'll do the same thing. We'll come back.
Yep, we'll bring this back up again. Obviously we'll give the board plenty of notice. Either for further discussion or maybe some direction one way or the other from the board. But I, I think the point was, we just wanted to at least introduce these concepts and, and start that conversation and then we'll, we'll, we'll bring it to a head or a conclusion here later. Okay, is there any, any last other comments from board members? Okay. We're now down to 9.2. This is Mike's favorite part of the meeting. Public comment from on agenda items. Any public comment? Okay, nothing heard. We did have enclosures. Before we get to 9.4, I believe it was sort of mentioned in passing, either at this meeting or at the committee meeting last Tuesday, the board did have an informational briefing by the insurance company over at Eisenhower School. Obviously no decisions were made at that point. Our next board meeting will be a regular meeting on May the 10th at 7:00 PM. Our next committee meetings are academic committee on May the 3rd. Policy and Personnel on May the 10th, both at 5:30. May I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Moved in second. And anybody opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming.